...in this school district. Let the record show that according to board members is present, this meeting has been nearly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 501. Need to certify the agenda? Have motion to certify the agenda? Made by Robert. Second by Scott. Any other questions on that? All four. This is 7-0. Everybody's here. Offright voice. Lord, thank you for bringing us here tonight, and we're especially asking God for wisdom. We're watching over, I should watch over our students and our staff and our parents and grandparents and all these folks that are up here, Lord, and just give this board guidance, help us to make good decisions. Lord, thank you, Jesus, for dying on the cross for our sins, and thank you, Lord, for this Christmas season, and thank you, Lord, for the blessings we're going to be able to do later on and the blessings that we'll get at Christmas time. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Spirit of pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right, Dr. McCollum's got some special recognitions here, so we're going to do our special recognition. We're going to start with teachers. We have some teachers, and we have some band. And once we get all that done, we'll do a few pictures, and then some of y'all might want to disperse unless you want to... What have we got, about three hours?
All right. I love this part of the meeting where we get to recognize some of our fabulous employees, and so we're going to start with the elementary teacher of the month. If I could have Ms. Stephanie Gertis come forward, please. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, let me read what it says about Ms. Gertis. It says, "The definition of a teacher is one who helps others acquire knowledge or values. Ms. Gertis' ability to teach her students encompasses much more as she is a mentor, a guide, and a source of inspiration for all those fortunate to call her their teacher or colleague. She is a champion for students as she encourages and affirms them daily while going above and beyond to connect with students on a personal level, making learning fun. Ms. Gertis implements innovative teaching methods that cater to diverse learning styles, ensuring every student feels supported and challenged. She is a trailblazer and challenges all of us at Mount Vernon Elementary School to grow and expand our mindsets. In addition, she adds value to our team with her strong work ethic and high expectations. Ms. Gertis serves as a collaborative team leader and spends countless hours preparing rigorous lessons aligned to TEES. As a result, our third grade students performed well above the region and stayed in every performance category on the Math Star. In addition to her exemplary teaching skills, she is known for exceptional communication with parents, keeping them informed about students' progress and creating strong homeschool partnerships. Throughout her time as a teacher at Mount Vernon Elementary School, she has left a mark on the hearts and minds of our students. Her classroom is not just a space for academic growth, but a place where students feel empowered to explore, question, and discover their capabilities. Her passion for teaching the whole student has single-handedly impacted the trajectory of students' lives. We wholeheartedly believe Ms. Gertis deserves recognition for outstanding contributions to our school. Her passion for education is contagious, and she consistently inspires both students and colleagues alike. She is a difference maker. Elementary Teacher of the Month, Ms. Stephanie Gertis." Want to say anything?
I'm blessed to be able to work in a community that supports our teachers, and I love to come to work every day.
Very good, thank you. Next, we'll do the middle school teacher of the month. If I could have Ms. Michelle Dameron come down, please. Congratulations. Says, "Michelle has been a valuable member of Mount Vernon Middle School her entire seven year career in education. She has a love and passion for kids and their well-being. She cares deeply and works hard to help each and every student while building relationships and developing individual plans for each student. She works well with her colleagues and is eager to assist anyone in any capacity to better our students, for student success, our campus for student success. Ms. Dameron creates lesson plans that relate to student activities, daily lives, and enjoyments. She endeavors to plan individual lessons that encourage her students to love reading and writing while developing activities to highlight student successes. Such lessons include reading and writing about outside activities like football, baseball, softball, etc., and having celebrations for those successes outside of the school environment as well. It is not uncommon to see students reading short plays and visiting the outdoor theater center. Ms. Dameron volunteers for many things to improve her campus. She heads up the AR activities for the campus and creates exciting AR parties each grading cycle to reward and encourage a love for reading. She coaches UIL academics and volunteers to mentor and assist students to make appropriate choices and volunteers for the campus improvement committee, all for the success of our students and campus. She is enthusiastic and passionate about her job. Ms. Dameron is a rock star, and we are blessed to have her on our middle school campus. Middle School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Michelle Dameron." Congratulations. Want to say anything?
We moved here in 1996 to put our kids through this school district, and we are still here. And our grandchildren kids go to school here, and I'm just thankful that they have the opportunity to be part of such a good community and school district.
We're glad you're here as well.
Thank you.
Next, we have our high school teacher of the month, Ms. Shelley Walker. Ms. Shelley Walker is one of Mount Vernon's most dedicated teachers and is an instrumental part of daily operation of our school. She is long overdue to be recognized as Teacher of the Month for the Mount Vernon High School. She has a passion for not only art, but also for the students that she teaches on a daily basis. In her art room, creativity is always on full display. She encourages students to explore their artistic talents freely while guiding them to improve their skills. Her classroom culture is excellent, and students are free to explore their creative side and showcase their talents. Outside the classroom, Shelley's commitment to showcasing student art and participating in community events demonstrates her dedication to spreading the joy of art beyond just our school. Her students have consistently performed well in area art competitions, and she makes it a point to celebrate their successes. She and her students are often collaborating with other campuses and teachers to share her student work and make meaningful connections. In addition to being a fabulous teacher in the classroom, she is always ready and willing to help out in any additional ways that are necessary. She helps yearly with the Mount Vernon High School program, sponsors great little programs, and this year has taken on the role of producing the Mount Vernon High School Yearbook. Ms. Walker's genuine care for her students and ability to cultivate their love for art make her an outstanding role model. Her impact goes beyond teaching as she makes a noticeable impact on all those in the school community. We genuinely appreciate all that Ms. Walker does for our school, and she is more than worthy of being recognized Teacher of the Month. Mount Vernon High School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Shelley Walker." Want to say anything?
Well, I am blessed to be able to work here as my alma mater, and thank you for the recognition. I really appreciate that.
You're welcome. Congratulations. And now our Campus Support of the Month. If I could have Ms. Frida Evans come down, please. Congratulations. All right. Says Frida Evans is very deserving of Campus Support Employee of the Month because her dedication to the well-being and growth of our students exceeds expectations. Her vibrant smile and enthusiasm ultimately uplifts all who are around her. Have you ever heard of a parent complain about their unruly toddler or pre-K age student? They just won't listen. Let me tell you about a pre-K teacher with superpowers. Ms. Frida can motivate an entire classroom of four-year-olds to meet and exceed all expectations. Her abilities to connect and influence our pre-K students are astounding. She is a paragon of patience, providing unwavering support to student, to every student, especially during challenging times. Her ability to teach, practice, reinforce, and demonstrate love through difficulties has created an atmosphere of understanding and encouragement in the classroom. She uses trauma-informed practices effortlessly to help students build a sense of stability, cultivate self-worth, and build meaningful relationships. She is a student, staff, and parent favorite as she has a unique gift for connecting with students, fostering a sense of security and trust. Her commitment to each child's development, both academically, socially, and emotionally, is truly commendable. In times of adversity, Ms. Frida's resilience shines, turning challenges into opportunities for growth. Her positive influence extends beyond the classroom, leaving a lasting impact of the entire school community. Her genuine love for students and teaching make her invaluable asset to Mount Vernon Elementary School. Ms. Frida is different. Ms. Frida? Want to say anything?
I'd like to say, first of all, I thank God for this opportunity to be able to be blessed and work with children. It is a blessing, and I know that was my calling because I do love kids, and I'm sure I have taught most of some of you that have had kids, but I do love them. They're on my heart. I will always love them and thank you, and thank you at one.
Well, thank you. We're glad you're here. If you'll sit right here, we're going to do a group picture. You'll get one picture with the board? Nope, we're all, all of us. She got, we got one. Congratulations, ladies. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we have some band recognitions.
So, we wanted to recognize some of our kids. I know everybody sees the band on Friday nights, they see what we do for UIL, but we have some kids that go above and beyond that, and we want to recognize some of those kids. First off is the juniors and seniors that participated in the 65th Annual Junior-Senior Honor Band held at Texas A&amp;M Commerce. Students are nominated by their high school directors and selected based off of their musical achievements throughout their high school career as well as academic achievements. The event was made up of just over 250 students from all over the state. Students had just six hours of rehearsal to put together a fantastic concert, and students also participated in master classes with commerce professors and got a Q&amp;A with the composer who actually wrote the music. Those students were Eliana Santiago, who's not here, she had work today, Tristan Burden, Alora Schlotman, Karen Thedford, and Lincoln Horse, Arndt Kostka. Yeah.
Pretty good. Does he get a picture?
Mr. Barley, want to get in with them?
We also have a student who auditioned for the ATSSV All-Region Jazz Band. That's an audition for students from 1A through 4A high schools. Not only did he make it on guitar, but he also made it on trumpet and advanced to area on trumpet. And that's Seth Barrett. We want to recognize him. In addition to that, there's also a concert version of ATSSV All-Region that was this Saturday, and Lincoln, not only is he advancing to area, but he got first chair in the region band on October. And then both of these students were nominated for the Four States Honor Band, which is made up of students from Texas, Louisiana, Oklahoma, and Arkansas, and they will be performing at a concert in Texarkana in January. So, we're real excited for that as well.
We have all the band students come back up. We'll take a picture with you as well.
And we have a concert this Thursday at 6:30. We'd love to see y'all there.
That's the Christmas concert?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Third did 6:30.
Yes, sir.
Will you show this to the board quickly? We need to get to see that.
These will actually be going in that trophy case right outside as well.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Let's do our information items. Roman Todes?
First, we have Roman Todes has a DC for the first, is 1553. That's down about nine from Todes to the first, but I think we've been holding steady there for this month, so we're 1553.
Okay. All right. Just time for some campers to start.
Okay, I just wanted to start out by providing a few highlights. Our teachers have been finishing up their learning walks, and so that is where our teachers go into other classrooms for purposeful observations, and they report on what they see and then what they can take and implement in their classrooms. And so through that, we've had a lot of positive feedback from teachers, just affirming the work that their colleagues are doing and then taking things back in their classrooms. So I wanted to highlight two teachers specifically that so many came back to me and really just sung their praises. And so one was Ms. Brophy, Carissa Brophy, a first grade teacher. They really just raved about her excellent classroom management, how her rules and procedures and routines are in place, and how she really does with, you know, we definitely have different students with behavior intervention plans and how she implements those effortlessly and then really just individualizes based on the student's needs and then provides her valuable input. I also wanted to highlight a kindergarten teacher, Ms. Alora Painter. She's created such a loving classroom community. She's built a, just a positive rapport. Every substitute that goes in her classroom can see it, and all of the staff members see it. Specifically, we had one teacher go in and observe how she works her stations, and so she is just a master at differentiation, meaning every, all these kindergarten students are in their stations, but they're leveled based on their level. And so when she's bringing her small groups back to teach them, she's teaching on their individual level and then providing the scaffolds needed for them to be successful, so high, medium, low. I also wanted to highlight Dylan Blair and Kate and Tranthem, our communities and schools. They are really in the throes of our Christmas store, and they're such a blessing to our kids and our families by providing Christmas for, and it's all CIS as well, Christmas for our families. So, it's a very huge undertaking, and we're very appreciative of all their hard work and the many hours that we're spending on preparing for that. And I think that's going to be December 15th is when the Christmas store is going to open. Our attendance rate is still at 96%. A little update on capturing kids' hearts. Right now, we are several teachers and staff members for our campus. We are going to go and visit Roy City on January 24th, and they are a national showcase district, and so we'll have the opportunity to visit an elementary school and a middle school. We'll get to interview the administration, ask teachers questions, and also get to speak to some of the students and really learn about how it's impacted them. Just some events happening. Our second grade students went on a field trip to our local governmental offices, and we're about to have our first semester Tiger Fiesta, so that's our positive behavior incentive. And it's going to be held at the First Baptist Church, where we're going to do carnival games. We had, on our December 8th Professional Development Day, we hosted parent conferences, and so we received a lot of positive feedback from both teachers and parents, where, you know, it just provided additional time for them to meet with their parents, discuss progress, and really just kind of build a plan. And so they really enjoyed doing that, and many of them commented that it was one of the most meaningful professional development days they have had. So, I kind of, I wanted to hit on our campus improvement plan. I know you guys have a copy of it, but for our 2023, 2024 school year, I was going to highlight just some key focus areas for the elementary school. So, this year, the elementary campus will maintain a B accountability rating, and for those of you that do not spend a lot of time diving into accountability, I really just wanted to point out the academic growth calculation. It's one of the biggest changes that we have had with the new refreshed A3F accountability system, and so campuses earn credit for maintaining performance and growing performance. And so like we've mentioned before, our elementary campus is kind of at a disadvantage when it comes to accountability. So what does that mean? So that means we only have one grade level to demonstrate that growth measure. So that means our students in third grade have to demonstrate a full year of academic growth, meaning they have to maintain their performance or grow for us to earn credit for growth. So, that puts, as I'm sure you can feel, a huge amount of pressure on seven fourth grade teachers as well as those fourth grade students, whereas the other campuses, they have many more grade levels to demonstrate growth as well as test. We just have our fourth grade math and fourth grade reading star. So I wanted to give you a little insight on that. So because of that, one of our big focuses is growth, and so I'm going to just kind of talk to you about some priority statements and then some strategies that we're implementing and going to implement to address those. So the first priority statement is that we do have a low percent of students demonstrating academic growth from third to fourth grade start. So what we've done this year so far is we've provided professional development for those teachers. We've had outside consultants come in, and we've also provided job embedded professional development. We are continuing to have our PLCs, which is our planning meetings. What the Blue Days or Professional Development Days have also given us is time to vertically align, so we've had meetings with our second, third, and fourth grade teams, math and reading language arts. Our teachers and our campus leadership team are monitoring our Common Unit assessments, and so we've got spreadsheets where our teachers go in and they input the scores and then they input the student growth, so we're seeing based on each assessment which students are holding, which students are growing, and which students that we need to intervene with, and then we're building an action plan for those students. Something else we're doing is our teachers are facilitating student goal setting, so our students are making goals, and then they're monitoring their progress. And again, our teachers are, they are going through like learning walks and observing other teachers. So our next priority statement is our staff are overwhelmed with a number of students without emotional and behavioral regulation skills. I'm sure this is no surprise. And so here are some things that we are doing. This year, we have implemented a social-emotional learning program called Choose Love, so every class is doing that in the first 10 minutes of the day, and so that is a direct explicit teach led by the teacher to the students on behavior regulation, how to conflict resolution, and all of that. So that is one thing we're doing. Another thing that really caused us to seek out capturing kids' hearts was the fact that, you know, we're listening to our staff. Obviously, you know, we feel it, the fact that our kids are struggling. They're struggling to regulate their emotions, and so that's another thing that we are doing is we are seeking out capturing kids' hearts. Something else, we have implemented an MTSS behavior system, and that's led by Ms. Hassel, and so that's been huge for our teachers. They do feel supported. We have meetings just like we have on the academic side, we have on the behavior, and so our students go through a tiered process, and as they do that, they're provided intervention. And so we have like an intervention team that will receive sessions with Sarah Long, our counselor, Dylan Blair, and so those are some strategies that we are working on right now to help with that. Another priority statement is our staff retention rate, although it has increased from last year, we're still only at 83%. I mean, I would love to be up here next year and be like, we had 100% of our staff come back, but so we really are invested in building a positive culture on our campus. And so some things that we're doing, we are being very strategic, and the fact that we have a monthly culture calendar, and so we have events and things planned for both our students and our staff monthly that we're implementing. We had 86 staff members come to our Christmas party. I mean, I think that speaks volumes when you have that many people come to a gathering outside of work hours. So it really is, we're really trying to create a family atmosphere that people want to be a part of. Teachers are, we're involving teachers in the decision-making process, developing leadership capacity in our teachers and providing opportunities for them to lead. We're trying to increase our staff recognition. You know, we have weekly teachers in the spotlight, but also we're really trying to be intentional about just affirming at least two members a day. We have staff shout-outs and positive office referrals. I called three staff members' parents last week, and so you can imagine how their moms and dads, I called the dad, when they answered the phone, they were like, why is this school calling? But, you know, you guys are all parents, and you know it never gets old hearing how proud, you know, someone is of your kids. So, we're doing all those things. Something long-term that we would really like to create is we would like to create a staff wellness area just to promote the mental health and well-being of our staff. Another statement is, another priority is lack of parent participation in the educational process. So this Friday, we've scheduled parent conferences, and really it was an expectation that teachers make a good faith effort to try to get the parents to come up face-to-face. It's, I know it's easy to do a phone call, but we really wanted them to meet with the parents face-to-face. All of our staff are still required to make five to six parent positive contacts grading period. We've implemented Class Dojo, and we've got a lot of feedback for that because it's just instant messaging, and so it allows for teachers and parents just to communicate really quickly through like a text. And so, and that also is how parents can see if their kids like are getting points for positive behavior and kind of what's going on. Our PTA this year has also been very instrumental in helping really get more parents involved. We've had a lot more parents join the PTA, come to school, participate, and help give back to our staff and kids. And we're continuing to host events and provide opportunities for our parents to be involved. In January and February, we're going to have a bilingual night, and then we're also going to have, something we haven't done before, we're going to have an art gallery night where Miss Watson will, and the kids will get to showcase their artwork. Do you guys have any questions? Thanks, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To start with, I'll just touch on some highlights. First, I wanted to say super proud of our middle school one act play. They did get first on Friday, did an amazing job. If you got to see the play, it's extremely emotional. It'll just bring you to tears. They did a really good job. I've gotten lots of contact, lots of comments and from people I know from equipment who said that it was just an amazing job. We have our UI academics tomorrow in equipment. I'm very excited about it. We've worked really hard. The teachers have been doing practices mornings and afternoons and every chance they get for all the contests that we'll be participating in tomorrow, and I really have high expectations for them. We are still working right now for the fifth grade portion of it that'll be in the elementary UIL academics, which happens in January. We, in order to work on that staff morale... We, in, in order to work on that staff morale and that retention of teachers, one of the things we're doing, just we try to do fun things with the teachers, have events. One of them's going to be a holiday party that'll be sponsored by our PTO on January 5th. And the teachers are really kind of excited about it. We were kind of surprised at first they were no, but now they're just really looking forward to it, having an opportunity for us to get together in a non-working type of environment. And that happens again in January on the 5th. We have our awards ceremony that'll be happening on the 21st where we acknowledge and celebrate all the wonderful honors, the grades, the attendance, the behaviors, things like that where we also, we give out and do drawings for electronics and the kids really excited about, you know, hoping that they get the TV or whatever things that we have to bring along. They're already asking me, what's going to be the awards? We also have basketball going on tonight. We have the girls here tonight. And there, everything's just, just kind of clicking along. We love the fact that Ms. McCurdy and through our CIS is having mentors come out and visit and have group little, group little sessions during lunch with them and having some mentoring sessions with them. So we look forward to having some volunteers, if there's any volunteers out there that you know of any minute would like to help mentor some, some students. I'll move on to our campus improvement plan. Just like Desiree mentioned, one of the things we're really focusing on similarly is growth. It's a very big part of the accountability. So some of the things that we're doing, of course, is our PLCs where we determine any students that might need some additional help. We also find in that, during those PLCs, some peer tutoring, some, some peers that, you know, doing, being very successful that might could help with some other students. And we find that is beneficial. We also have morning and after-school tutorials, and we also have RTI pullouts during non-core classes during the day through our intervention. We've been having students do their own goals and charting it through, they create their own charts so they can see how their growth is, if they are attaining growth or if they need to work a little harder. So keeping track of those charts lets them help be, you know, I guess just keep an, keep an eye on their own work so they can see and rather than just hear from a teacher. That seems to be working very well so far. The kids are enjoying, you know, being able to track that and seeing some, seeing some growth. Our biggest thing is trying to increase the rigor so that we can get those percentage points or increase those percentage points in the meets and masters area of all subjects. So we are attending professional developments. We are having Region Eight come in and give us some ideas. We're meeting in our PLCs and outside the PLCs as teams and determining how we can help one another in that area. One of the things that we're also working on that we found, we, we struggled a little endless last year was our ESL students having an opportunity to really excel at what they're doing. They know how to do, they, they're learning, they're progressing, but they're really not real comfortable on the technology. So we're having a, we're going to have a blitz in order to help them practice more and be more familiar because you've got to be able to speak certain ways. And if you don't speak into the microphone a certain way, it doesn't capture the actual progress that they are making. So we're working in that area as well. And then we are working to create that parent and teacher involvement more together. So we also have created opportunities for parents to come up and whereas they have, teachers have the ten positive parent phone calls or contacts that they make every grading cycle, there, we're also adding in having them come up, not just for if a student is struggling, but also for that positive. Because those students that are really excelling, for those to, them to have an opportunity to be able to showcase their abilities as well. Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon, good evening. Going to start with the campus improvement plan part and then go back to the campus update or after that. As it always seems to be the case, the majority or a lot of the campus improvement plans you're going to see for the high school related around EOC and STAR. And I'll just start by saying, very proud of what we did last year, STAR related, and we showed a lot of, a lot of growth in a lot of different areas. So I think that if we can continue that momentum this year and continue to show that growth, we're going to be right where we need to be. So when you look at that and you see the, the numbers that are reflected in there, that kind of, the, the goals for this year, if we obtain them again, we will, as I said, be right where we need to be in relation to our scores on the EOC. And we always go, go back to the, looking for the meets and the masters. Y'all, y'all probably hear that a lot. But really, that's where the, that's where, that's where the meat of this is at. And that's where a lot of the things that we're doing is, is focused on trying to, trying to get the kids there. And I really, I think our teachers are doing a great job getting us there. So, so a lot of the things that we have in place as far as strategies to, to achieve that and, and get those percentages to where we want them to be are being implemented at a, at a high level. We're really, this year, at the, at the high school, we're really looking at student engagement and trying to give teachers tools to use in the classroom that promote an engaged student and engaged activities in the classroom. And Ms. Wilkins and myself have been really working in all of the meetings that we've had or the professional development days and trying to do things that demonstrate different activities that can be rolled right in the classroom. And we did some of that last weekend on our professional development, not last weekend, last Friday on our professional development day. And got some really good feedback from that and some teachers that came to us and said, hey, we're going to use that in the classroom. And that's kind of exactly what we're talking about. But yeah, we're still using a lot of the strategies that we, that we used the last couple of years that have kind of got us to the point that we're at now. Really looking at making sure that, that our grading and our, and our classroom instruction is tightly aligned to the, to the standards that we're supposed to be teaching, using some of the, what they call performance assessments that are in the teacher's resource system that we know are at the right level of rigor, which is another, I get tired of educational buzzwords, but that's one of them that, that we have to use. We're really trying to push teachers and staff to make sure that the instruction in the classroom is at a high enough level that the student's going to see on the EOC test. You know, that's really what it's all about. So again, a large part of the campus improvement plan is geared towards that. Another thing that we've talked about a lot is TSI, college readiness exam. Been in here a while, listened to me talk, you know that we do the math TSI with our sophomores every year, and then we do the reading, English TSI with our juniors. And then we try to measure and keep up with how, what percentage of our seniors are graduating with TSI readiness. So for this year, our 2023, it'll be our 2024 class, our goal is to have forty percent of those kids graduate with math college readiness according to TSI. And right now, we sit at about thirty-two percent. So that's actually, we have a hundred and one, right now, we have a hundred and one seniors. So it's really not too far off because what we'll do at the end of the year, we'll take a lot of the seniors that have taken the test and weren't quite successful, we'll take, we'll bring them back and they'll do it again. So we'll pick up a bunch of them right at the end of the year as well. So we certainly have an opportunity to meet that goal this year. On the English side, we have thirty-seven, thirty-seven seniors right now that have, that are complete, TSI complete in both the reading and the essay portion of the TSI. And then we have another seven to ten that, that have completed one or, one or two, one of the two, I should say. So again, they'll pick those up toward the end of the year. So, so I really think we'll probably hit that goal by the end of the year. So that's something we continue to monitor in our junior level teacher especially will be working a lot on TSI the second semester this year. Just a quick note on IBCs and CCMR and all of those good things. When, if you see the plan that we put out there, the, the goal is seventy percent of graduated seniors will have at least one IBC, that's industry-based certification by the time of graduation. Now, if you go back several years, you'll see that we were at that goal and have exceeded it. But then, of course, as they always do, the game has changed at this point. So now some of the things that used to count don't count anymore. Some of the things that used to count still count, but they have to be tied to a program of studies. There's all these different catches now that there wasn't before, but that's a long way of saying this. Last year, we had forty IBCs and this year, we have sixty-three already. So we are getting, we're, again, we're trending in the right direction. I give most of the credit there to Ms. Brown, who's worked very diligently on aligning the programs of study, the certifications, and all that goes into the CCMR, which is a, a whole lot of things if you've heard anything about it. So she's done a great job there. So I would expect that to continue to trend in the upward direction as well. Let's see, one of our goals in there is to maintain our attendance rate of at least ninety-five percent for the academic year. We are still there, but we are barely hanging on. So, so hopefully the end of the semester and the beginning of the new semester will give some kind of, I don't know what the right word is, but a renewed energy to coming to school. But we are still up from what we have been in the past. Certainly, we've seen an increase in attendance this year and a decrease in discipline referrals I'm still today as well. So those are good things. The other parts of the plan, there's a, there's a goal in there about just involving parents. You know, we continue to do things that we've done in the past. We have eighth grade parent night, second semester, we'll do a CTE night. Ms. Stevens does FAFSA nights for teachers, for parents, deal cred nights. We have the open house and those sorts of things. One of the things that we don't struggle with is, is getting community involvement. I'm grateful for that. So at the high school, we, obviously, we have the partnership with the Rotary Club. They do the academic banquet, they do student of the month. We do have all kinds of people in the community that are involved in Leaders of Tomorrow. We have the Mount Vernon Character Program. So it goes on and on and on. And Ms. Wilkins and I were actually talking today about some new things that we want to do for seniors this year, maybe a top ten banquet, top deal within the year. So we'll be looking for some community sponsors for that as well. And I know we're not going to have any problems finding that. So it's just a matter of putting it out there and someone will pick it up immediately. So that's one of the great things about, about this community. So those are the main highlights of the campus improvement plan. So I will jump over now to just the, the updates. So as I talked about a little bit ago, we had the last professional development day last Friday, probably our best one yet. Had a lot of really good feedback from that day. Social studies did some work with Region Eight in preparing, you know, not just our EOC teacher, but everyone just in the, in the curriculum and with their, with the specialists from Region Eight there, that was really good. Our, our ELA teachers got to meet with the middle school ELA teachers and do some vertical planning. Great feedback from that. And then the full staff, we did some things with our campus needs assessment as well as our MTSS program that I think Desiree was talking about earlier. So that was a really good day as well. Some things going on, just hitting some highlights, our TAFI, Texas, Texas Association of Future Educators, they had a competition last Friday and we had some state qualifiers there. We had, this is a young lady, Ms. Jason Brown. She, she qualified for the, for state competition in the ELF test. That's not a Christmas test. That is about, that's about the education learning program of study. So every class that they've had in high school in that program of study is a test, knowledge-based test on gas, so she qualified for state. And we also had two students, Lily Johnson, Cameron Pope. They qualified for state in interactive bulletin board. Two more, Mia Breeden, Kimber Cunningham, in an ethical dilemma competition. And then we have, we had a young lady who won the Area Six Taffy shirt, T-shirt design contest, Mia Mancius. So that was a pretty good day for those, those students over there at TAFI. They also participated in the Area Six Service Project that is called Project Linus, where they delivered blankets, handmade blankets to seriously ill, traumatized, and otherwise in need kids. So that was a really good day for them. Lot of good things going on there. Our interact club, which is led by Ms. Stevens, our high school counselor, does tons of things that, that go unnoticed. But anyways, they have done, just recently, Christmas caroling on December the second. They participated in Reis for Veterans, or it's coming up this week, December the sixteenth. They spent the time last week writing notes of gratitude for all the teachers and also participated in a canned food drive for the Bountiful House. That's all recently. Let's see, what else do we have here? We have a, Ms. Stevens has a planned FAFSA day to help parents and students get registered for that coming up in January, that's January the ninth, and January the thirtieth. And then we have the ACT School Day coming up soon. So she'll be working to get kids registered for that as well. Over in the ag world, we have, we have a young lady that is qualified for state in an LDE competition. That's, her name is Katie Tovar. So she has made the, she made the finals in English creed speaking and stayed and was in the top, in the top ten. And she was also a semifinalist in Spanish creed. That's top twenty-four. And again, that's all classifications one through six in those competitions. AgMEC wants to report they're working on eight projects for major show competition this year. They're going to be going to San Angelo, which is new this year, as well as Houston with the projects. So they're doing a twenty-two foot gooseneck, they're doing a six by twelve utility, a four by six safety basket, hay spear, farrier toolbox, seven foot land plane, and portable wire school rack. So they have all kinds of things going on. And I don't know when the San Angelo competition is, but I know the Houston one is on spring break usually. And let's see. Floral design class, we did something new here. They went to a floral design competition. I believe it's the first time we've ever done that. That was December the sixth. So they had a, they had a great time over there and it's something I think they want to explore further in the future. Cheerleading, cheerleading over the weekend, they went to Dallas yesterday to the NCAA, NCAA State Texas Championship, and they were second in their division. Coach Cunningham was telling me today that, kind of how it worked, but essentially they were competing against a lot of bigger schools. They finished second to Rockwall in their, in their category. So they're getting geared up and ready for the state competition on January the fourth where they're defending champions. And then basketball's in full swing and we've got the boys and girls here tomorrow night at home. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Just a construction update.
Hello. Workfield Company, Drew with Hella Start First, just to give us a little update in regard to kind of phase two of our projects, saying a little bit of phase three, maybe?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so phase two, obviously, is baseball, softball, and tennis. Baseball and softball, we've got the fields laid out. We've got the field curbs starting to go in. Fence posts will start to go in as well. The collector drain lines are going in. After that would be the vertical drain, the drain stone, and then the turf. So between now and when you guys meet again in January, the fields will be most of the way ready for turf. We'll start turf mid-January. Tennis, we've got on the back burner just because we've got all our attention focused on baseball, softball. We'll probably get ready to form up for those slabs in mid-January for tennis. As far as phase three goes, meaning the stadium, right now, we're still proceeding as though we're going to have the bleachers and press box in the new home and, the new home side bleachers and press box in for graduation. We were promised at the end of October by the bleacher company that was not going to be an issue. They have since wavered a little bit. But we've got those into production now. So we're trying to get a more firm date to make sure they can have those delivered and installed for graduation. For right now, we're still proceeding as though that's going to be the case. If for any reason that can't happen, the way we would change gears would be to get the buildings that go under the bleachers in first, go vertical on those so that we're not trying to squeeze those in in the summer along with bleachers and press box. Like I said, right now, the plan is still to move forward with getting the bleachers and press box in first, have graduation, and then come back underneath after graduation to get the buildings finished.
So it's looking like we'll probably have some bleachers for graduation?
That's the plan, yes. Baseball, softball bleachers are still scheduled to be here on January twenty-ninth. So it'll be tight, but we should have those in before baseball, softball start on the twelfth.
So, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Yes, sir.
Are we getting that door stopped, doesn't it? Is our cheer that's up here?
That's where we're hearing it, the cheer. We do have a representative from Jackson NWR, I assume to be here as well, just give my brief, we're still in the, the process of finalizing woodprints and making a few adjustments there. Jackson's still working. Jackson's still working on timeline and facing of what we're going to do there. And again, they're here if you have any questions for them.
How far along are the blueprints, like eighty percent, ninety percent?
No, the CDs for the construction documents will be ready in March, mid-March, early April. So right now, we're roughly around the sixty, sixty-five percent level, but we're still working things out with the city as far as code issues, because as you know, school's pretty old in some areas, so there's a little bit of leniency, but we're also trying to get them to give us something in writing to where they do hire a new fire chief, or they have a third-party inspector come in, and we're covered by that and not having to redesign at the last minute. So that's kind of where we're at, we're kind of, not in design sense still, but like MEP-wise and a little bit of structure. They're kind of on a little bit of hold till we get some verification from the city and can move forward.
Still on target to start, basically, after graduation, first of June?
Yeah, we should have the construction documents to have mid-year, and they should be ready to roll.
Yeah, we're still targeting an early site package and everything, that's still the plan right now.
So what will that start look like, when we start? If we start in June, kind of what will that, will it just be everything bombarded, or what? Give me an idea.
No, and again, it's still fluid. Right now, we are working through the, kind of the details and some different options. But as far as Phase One, what we're looking at is the site paving. Getting mobilized, kicking that off, and the plan will be started, you know, May of twenty twenty-four and complete by August by the time, you know, faculty and kids come back. It'll be phased out in, kind of like we talked about a couple months ago at the last meeting. We're still looking at multiple phases, you know, as far as the duration goes, it's going to be upwards of two years. But we're, we haven't fully laid out as far as where the trailer and all that's going to be placed. We're still working out the details right now, just with the design team and Dr. McCullough on that. And then as they develop, we'll get more strategic. And again, all that will be fluid, presenting it to the district, the faculty, the principals, and kind of getting their feel and appearance as well, showing the campus.
What about construction costs, do they maintain it, are they going up, going down?
There, I'd say this past year, they've maintained, you know, we're not, we have similar experiences in just about every project, just depending on when the bonds were passed, you know, current costs, where they're at. We're working through those details again right now, just with WRA and Dr. McCullough, but at this stage, where we're tracking, it's not anything abnormal where we're at.
So the prices will be about the same?
Depends on what we're talking about.
Well, I mean, I didn't hear an answer to this question, I'm just asking.
We're tracking prices right now, I mean, we're, we're a little bit over, but not of too much concern at this stage now.
So their, your, the construction cost is kind of flattened out right now, so we're just kind of hoping that they see that go down?
Yeah, we've, the last peak we saw, about thirty, forty percent, was twenty-twenty-two, that first quarter. Since then, things have flattened out, I wouldn't say they've reduced, but they've flattened out, and it's a little bit better to estimate right now. So, you know, we've got a project actually bidding tomorrow to Texarkana, and I've kind of seen the same thing. They've kind of flattened out, and as far as the subs go, they're not anticipating huge material increases in the first quarter of twenty-four, like we saw a couple years ago.
Okay. Guys, thank you for being here.
Intruder detection audit report?
All right, so a couple weeks ago, we had our second intruder audit. This one was at the high school. We had one a month before the elementary that went good. Went to high school, we did have one door that was not, one exterior door that was not latched and locked. Unfortunately, Ms. Wilkins had just been by that door a few minutes before, and it was, but somebody had come out. That is the door on the cake building by our theater room. We've been having a little bit of issue with that from the, from the locking system as well. But anyway, because it was not, and the auditor found it when he pulled, and it was open, that was considered a finding. So we have, we have already held training here at the high school for how to make sure that a door is closed and locked with the high school staff and subs. And so we were required as part of that to report it, and that's why we're doing it here at the board meeting, to let you know that. That is a door, actually, that has been on board since August with first safety grant money. That's a door that will be replaced. So we're still waiting on that door to come in, but we're continuing to monitor and check that door to make sure that its locking mechanism is consistently working as well. Also, the staff there around that door, we've asked to continue to keep a, keep a watch on it, because we want to be sure, not just because of the audit, but because we know the safety is important to make sure all exterior doors are locked. So again, we've had, we have had the training, we've announced it here. At our next safety and security meeting, as the district, we'll have to report the findings as well, and then I have to provide this information to the state. So that's an update on our state. We'll probably have at least one more. They're going through those, we, our intermediate schools, our middle schools, only one's not being coded yet. And so I would anticipate, not that that's for sure will be the next one, but I would anticipate it will be our next one. Any questions on that?
Did you say when, I know you said the door was ordered, replacement, is there an expected arrival?
We still don't have anything on that due, Bobby, or anything for sure?
We said around before Christmas or the weekend, so.
Hopefully, when we come back from.
Yeah.
That's right. Any other questions on the intruder audit?
So, but they couldn't come in, would they, before we lock it?
Well, so the door still works, it's just, again, we've had some issues with one of our older doors. Our electronic piece from KLC that we have is part of the issue as well, the magnetic part, so we're working with them. So we're continuing to monitor it and fix it as needed, so.
Will they come back and check that?
So, so the only thing with that would be is if they come and do, they schedule another intruder audit and decide they're going to do the high school again, then they could go by and check it again, but no, they won't come back. They take what we, what else meant to TEA is the results of it. Part of it.
Yeah. Okay, let's talk about our January board meeting date.
So the regular scheduled one is, I believe, the eighth. I'm sure on that, is that right, does that sound right? Yes, is the eighth, but I know that we had, it's coming right back out of Christmas break as well. We had talked about the possibility of moving that, wanted to see, you know, eleventh's a possibility. The fifteenth is March, fifteen days, so the district will be closed. Following Thursday is the eighteenth, or Monday, the twenty-second.
Any dates, if, you know, in January, if we may not, I'll be able to be here on the same day. But what about eleventh, Kyle, what's eleven o'clock?
No, I won't be here.
That week's not good, okay. Fifteenth?
So the fifteenth, March, fifteen, the district's closed that day.
Okay, how about the eighteenth? Third day? You know, we're just, we may, if something comes up, we may have to move it, but we're trying to be transparent. That way, we let people know a month, six weeks, five weeks ahead of time. Then we, since we're off of our regular day. Okay, so January the eighteenth?
Are you sure, if you else see anything I missed in the calendar, or if you don't mind, or if you else see anything that would?
Is there any game, anything limited that would affect you that night?
Shouldn't on a Thursday. They play.
Shouldn't on a Thursday, that late.
Yeah, they play Tuesdays, Fridays.
District by then, it's a Friday.
Yeah, I switched to.
Yeah. So January eighteenth?
Yep, so January eighteenth, they're out.
We'll make sure we get that, make sure we get that on our website. You already have that, thank you very much, just your calendar as well, thank you.
Okay. They're up for, I don't see any stuff.
I don't, I didn't receive anything.
So let's go to our action items here, no, we're going to do our consent agenda at this time. Any questions on the consent agenda? Okay, so I need a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Josh, second by Robert, all, any further questions on that? All four then. That was six, approval of seven, our action items. I may consider approval of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four campus and district improvement plans. Is there anything else to add to that that we haven't heard?
Chandler has some, from the district, we've heard from the campus, Chandler has from the district.
Okay.
I'm going to go ditto, ditto, and ditto. Obviously, you love this board book so much, I know. I did try to keep the addendums off, so you're just singles and strategies. The only changes on the district side, the district improvement plan is the umbrella plan, as you know. The district plan is required to talk about suicide prevention, online form care, our safety protocols, our dropout prevention, bullying prevention, so ours looks a little different because it's the overall. So just a reminder, we do not have a accountability rating, so when you see those plans and I upload those to the website, they will show no rating until TEA goes through their process and any ratings released, or just a reminder on that. We did have to remove all of our S R two and S R three funding areas, since we no longer have those funds, so that was an update that we had to make in there. Continuing forward with instructional strategies, you heard all of that great information from the campus professors. I do have to brag on them for one quick second. They are doing an amazing job with job embedded professional development and needs for their individual campuses. I gave them that, that charge this year, and they have taken it and run with it. So I've been so proud of them for really focusing on the needs of their campuses and their teachers on those blue dates. Our focus also moving forward is growth, you've heard every campus talk about growth. That is the buzzword for this year with the changes with accountability. So you're going to hear us talk a lot about that moving forward into next school year. Just a reminder, on our MTSS coordinator, we did add that as an additional strategy this year. We do have that in place, Ms. Hassle, as you've also heard them mention, impacting our behavior intervention strategies to really support classroom teachers on, I don't want to say the new student, because students are students, but we have seen a shift in societal shifts, let's just say, in needs of teachers. And so that is definitely filling a need this year that we never thought we would have, which is just how to deal with the behavior with kids, where we have in the past depended on parents to really help us and support that. We don't have that strong of a push, as we've seen in the past. So on that, and then also, we have added the school safety upgrades to meet the new requirements, being funded with the school safety grant. We do have that second grant that we're also utilizing, hopefully, to avoid us hitting local funds, unless there's anything remaining on that, so you'll also see those changes as required. That is all that is going in there.
So you heard the campus improvement plans, district improvement plans, any questions?
All right, so we need to vote on that. Need a motion that we approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four campus and district improvement plans as presented? Motion made by Josh, second by Kyle, any further questions on that? Motion by Josh, second by Kyle, all four. Seven out, okay. I'd be considering Hopkins County appraisal district resolution to the board of directors. Got a, actually, a phone call today, so please be advised, Mark Humphries, the chairman of the Hopkins County Appraisal District Board of Directors, will expire December thirty-first of twenty-three. Please complete the resolution appointing your new member, or reappointing your current member on December fifteenth, turn to their office. So I have talked to a couple of people in Suffolk Springs about Mr. Humphries, I'm not sure.
Is he the current one?
He's the current one, yes, and I guess he's up in. We're just having one, kind of ready to read the board book, when they got him, slide him in there. But if we want to put somebody else in there, if y'all have recommendations, we'll put him in there. I think we have one vote. I think we have like two thousand.
Yeah, over two thousand.
Franklin County.
Yeah.
Just by size of the county, and then Suffolk Springs, I think probably has five thousand votes, but it was our one, so. All right, so.
Is that the recommendation, Mr.?
Mark Humphries.
Mark Humphries.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve Mark Humphries as for the board director in Hopkins County. Second, second by Scott. Any further questions or nominations on that? All four, Mr. Humphries. Seven out. Yep, seven more. I don't see considering approved Tasby Local Policy Update one twenty-two affecting the following local policies. Does anybody go on with that?
Did you have any questions on, Jessica uploaded the.
I've never been over a Tasby Local Policy Update that I didn't really just get confused and wonder, why are they doing this, but I may have to move on with it around.
And most of it's coming out of legislative changes that were in there, or usually Tasby legal looks through and changes wording based on their legal representation to be more compliant with a House bill or Senate bill that came in. So everything that was coming through was revisions and changes to existing. The main thing, I think one of the, to me, the things that they put in that I appreciated was they've added career investigation days, so high school students, juniors and seniors now, we can do excuse to absences for two days for high school students that are seeking to go out. So, you know, if they, if they wanted to go see Kyle's setup for career investigation and, and take a look at his business model.
Can they work while they're there?
So where in the past, you know, there's been this push on college, and, you know, that's, I was laughing as I'm listening to them. It's like acronyms sent out here for anybody who doesn't live in our world, it's like, how many acronyms can we have? But the college career military readiness piece of that, and to really have a focus on career, where it's not just college, 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 and so now for students to at least have a couple of days to be able to count as excuse. So out of all of the policies, that was probably to be one of the best additions that they made.
So it's doing college days also, on top of the professional days?
Yes.
Yeah.
So now they just added them specifically that we can code down for career.
So I would be pushing that. Sign up, let us, I mean, I'd like to know, you know, where do these kids go? That'd be a good end of the year, maybe, here's where a bunch of kids went and checked out these different jobs.
I'll be honest with you, Aaron, I've just kind of learned that this is a little thing.
Yeah, yeah. We approve this update, you can update this later on. Two days.
But then everything else in there was, there was some change to dyslexia wording with the new changes for dyslexia. But like I said, everything else is strike throughs. Accelerated instruction is still accelerated instruction, it's just went from House Bill forty-five, forty-five to House Bill fourteen, sixteen. Still required to accelerate kids in areas of need. So, yeah, this one didn't have any major changes other than that one and this is correct.
So much of the other topics.
Yes, correct. The opioid, the opioid, and we had already updated that, Tracy Decker, that was one of the pushes. And so we had already, we've already come to you with an FFAC update for opioid, and now that's just as easy legal update, so we were kind of ahead of the game. Yes, and so we had actually already had that in place, they just reworded it to match the legislative reporting.
Okay, hang on, Chandler on that. All right, this time I make a motion, we approve Tasby Local Policy Updates, CQB, CSA, DCE, HBE, HBC, HBCA, FBA, FFAC, and FFB. Yeah, that bill also. Anybody wanna second that? Linda, repeat that, that way I can get it first. Made by Aaron, second by Linda, all fours, those updates. Seven oh. Item D. Consider approval of a one-time employee retention stop.
Okay. This is something that we have, that the district has done before. Bring before you as a possibility for this, for this year as well. There is a resolution as a part of your packet that will go along with that. Be something we do for, and we'll be up for discussion in regard to how we wanted to term it for person currently employed, but as well as would still be employed here after Christmas, come back in January. It'd be something they would get before they leave for the semester.
Just cut them a check?
Be a check. Craig and I'll leave, what that would look like, do a check, and either the board could, the board want to hand that out, could come and do so, or if you want administrators do, we can do that as well next week before everybody leaves. Probably be done on Tuesday. Know what we're talking about, Craig?
Anybody wanna throw a number out there? What do you think? No audience participation.
What, what we've done in the past, it didn't make it worth five hundred dollars, so.
Five hundred, right across.
For every employee.
Cut them a check for five hundred, take nothing out of it.
Correct.
Correct. That would, yes, correct.
I need a motion for that.
Motion made.
Motion made by Linda to cut a check for five hundred dollars to all employees employed with us by past January first.
Yeah, we're still employed, yes.
You kept still employed January first?
Correct.
Or whatever day it would be.
January fifth, we come back.
Come back, yes. Someone come back earlier than that. Is anyone gonna second that, or is he gonna die like a second? Second by Robert. Any further questions or talking about it? All for the five hundred dollar check to employees. Seven oh.
On behalf of the employees, thank you very much for doing that. I know that'll be greatly appreciated. Thank you for doing so.
Alright, item D, consider approval of proposed pilot program with mutual link.
Okay, I think I gave you a little bit of information about this last month. We actually have Kylie Gorman here with mutual link, also Sheriff Griffin Jones is here to give a little bit of information as well. Kylie's got a presentation she's gonna share with you, give you a little more information of what it does and what it can do. This is what we're looking at as a pilot program. You saw an agreement in there, and we'll talk through more about that in just a minute, but I introduce Kylie Gorman to you, let him kinda share with you a little more about it.
Hi, everybody. Actually, my name is Kylie Gorman, you just heard twice. I live over in McKinney, and as I'm sitting there, I realized that I forgot to eat today, so if I pass out immediately, I'm sure somebody's sticking Snickers or something. So just to give you a brief background on mutual link. We've been around for seventeen years. We started as a result of the nine eleven mission report that came out in two thousand and three that said three hundred plus firefighters lost their lives because they were running into the south tower, and the cops that were already on scene there couldn't communicate with them. New York Fire Department and New York Police Department at that time didn't talk on the same radio channel. Well, the founder of our company was a radio guy, and he said, I'm gonna come up with a fix for that. So what he did was create what's called interoperable communication, so that if everybody in here is on a different radio channel, through our software, you can all talk on the same channel at once. Not that you want that to happen, too much shatters, too much chaos. So we got our, we got our start from the interoperable communication standpoint, but in the last couple of years, we've grown and expanded our service line to do some really cool stuff that Sheriff likes, because he doesn't have enough guys to work on all your campuses adequately. We can provide eyes and ears inside a building after a panic button's pushed. And when I say panic button, that could be an app on your phone. I don't think all heard rave, raptor, or just dozens of half of them out there that we all connect with. And once that panic button is hit, what happens after that? Well, Sheriff would get a notification in his dispatch center, let's say the high school, but it wouldn't be known exactly where the issue is or what's, what the particular need is on campus. So we provide eyes and ears inside the building during the time of the crisis. And I'm gonna demonstrate real briefly here how this works and how fast notifications will pop up at Sheriff's dispatch center. So I've got two panic buttons on my phone, real panic buttons. If I would happen to push one of those and dial my local dispatch center back in McKinney, I don't really want that to happen. So I use a panic button that just creates a alert inside our own system. Now what you're gonna see here is gonna happen very fast. This is, this is gonna be live fed video from Capital One Arena, which is downtown Washington, D.C. To answer your question, might come up next is, no, I can't access all the cameras for all the ten thousand installations that we've done. We have a relationship with the Department of Homeland Security. They've got some really high-tech cameras. About what we know is, well, we don't know. They're testing all kinds of new technologies on these, on these cameras, and they're using our system to merge in with. So I'm gonna push the panic button here on my phone. And what you're gonna see up on the screen here, this is what Sheriff would, would have happen in his dispatch center. So his nine-one-one telecommunicator would receive this incident and accept the incident, and within a matter of a couple of seconds, a floor plan of the school, in this case, it's Capital One Arena, would automatically load, and if the technology allows for it, it would show where the panic button was triggered and immediately start feeding live camera views, just like you see here. This is, they must be having some sort of event tonight at Capital One Arena. It would start feeding live camera views closest to where the panic button was triggered. Now, this is helpful to dispatchers because they can relay this information to guys in their patrol vehicles. But if I'm, if I'm rolling around in my cruiser, I'm saying, I'm a cop, if I'm rolling around in my cruiser, I've got my M D T here, and I don't have a dash, I'm on the data terminal, I can access all this too from my, from my cruiser. If I get out of my car, excuse me, if I get out of my car to come inside the building, I can switch over to the app on my phone and see everything that you see happening here on the screen. I can pull up other cameras if I want to, and I'll be lucky if I'm even older, because they don't always give us access. But I can be communicating with other officers responding on scene saying, alright, I'm the one behind door number six. Check that camera, see if there's any bad guys hiding back there. On the left-hand side here, I'll just pull up Texas real quick. These are all the agencies here in Texas that we're, where we've installed right now. If there were to happen, happen to be another school shooter, God forbid, we don't want enough to Uvalde where everybody's standing outside going, what's happening inside? Now, for Dr. McCullough's staff, faculty, and so forth, he can choose which people or members of the safety and security team would have this app on their phone. They would be able to use a push-to-talk feature on our app that would allow them to talk directly to responding officers on their radios. So if, you don't carry radios on campus here, right, Dr. McCullough? Nobody carries radios. So your, your only method of communication would be to dial into nine-one-one dispatch. Well, now they've got instant access to talk to responding officers outside the building. I could also, I'm gonna play my slogan. If I'm one of the people that has chosen to have this app on, on my phone, and this happens automatically, by the way. So if somebody, if somebody were to trigger a panic button here on campus, all of these, all of this information would happen automatically, and the officers that are on duty that day would also get the alert automatically. I'm gonna accept that invitation here. I could also share with responding officers a live camera feed from my phone. This might be a little sketchy because I don't have their cell signal here. If I was connected to the Wi-Fi network, I could share live video of an incident that's taking place with responding officers. So decisions can be made before somebody arrives on campus. This gives them eyes and ears inside the building, before they even arrive on scene, they, you know.
There it is.
There we go. Just needed something good to look at, I guess. But they can also use the push-to-talk feature, radio check. That would be transmitted through our software to their radios. Now, dispatch could control who's talking back and forth, because if you get somebody panicking on the inside of the building, and they're not really communicating information that's necessary or it's helpful to time resolution. The dispatcher can just choose to mute that person, bring other agencies in. In fact, D P S has our software in all of their vehicles. Like I said, we work with D H S, but all of the big three-layer agencies, F B I, C I A, they all use our technology as well. We do not just schools, but we do hospitals. We're in every football stadium, if there ever been a professional football game, we're in every football stadium. We do the, we do the coordination of all communications for the Super Bowl every year, which usually involves sixteen to twenty different agencies. So my point in this is if there were something that would require a multi-agency response, like Sheriff crosses the county line, I don't know, can, are you gonna have radio channels to talk to?
I think talk to anybody around me.
This, this would allow them to communicate through either their walkie-talkie or their, their cellphone to coordinate with other responding agencies. Text and video files can be shared. This is good for, let's say, somebody shows up on campus and they're not supposed to be there. If the secretary at the front office has all those records on file, he or she can instantly share that information to anybody who's responding to an incident. You can also share pictures of somebody, maybe there's a student that came back to school. This actually happened down in Smith County. Student came back to school, he was known to have mental health issues and not be on his meds. Well, the teacher, the secretary at the front desk gave him a pass and let him in, but he was fortunately caught on camera, and through their, through the software that they use, it was instantly triggered, an alert for the police to respond. So there's, it's multimedia sharing, excuse me, multimedia sharing, and I really do need some sugar, I'm running quick now. Good, thanks. I'll make it another few seconds. We are the only automated emergency response system that is certified by D H S. We're working with about thirty sheriffs here in east, northeast Texas to get installed in all of their P S apps or nine-one-one dispatch centers. And we are also working very closely with the sheriffs. I'm proud to say that the laws that came, came about through this last, last legislative session, official session, that required sheriffs to sit down with safety and security teams from each of their I S Ds, that was done mainly, mainly by our lobbyists that worked down in Austin. Finally gave sheriffs a seat at the table. In a town like, a rural town like you've got here, it could be twenty-five, thirty minutes before the next responding officer could get here. If they're out, I'll call them in various parks of county. I will stop there and answer any questions you have. Just to let you know, we integrate with any video system that's out there, any video management system, any, any radio system. I'm also here to offer you a pilot program on this. We're only doing this in the rural, excuse me, rural districts. The bigger districts, they seem to find money fairly quickly. And we also have a grant writer on staff that will assist in applying for the H B, H B three and S B thirty monies that are becoming available, that are currently available. Any questions?
Now Ricky, Ricky brought this to our attention months, six weeks ago, probably? We got to sit down and have a meeting with him. As you know, we're in the process of getting our sentegix software put up, put together. That's the button we've proved that we're getting through our first safety grant money. That's the button that every staff member will have, that will work with this, that will also show, as you saw when he, when he did it, the area in the, in the Capital One building. Same thing for when we have a teacher or a staff member that pushes the sentegix panic button, will show where they are. But it does work together with the mutual link. So then it'll be another piece on that for Ricky and, and his folks. If something is, a nine-one-one instance is taking place, it gives them instant access to, to what's going on in the hallway or in, in the area that that's taking place, where the cameras are, so.
And I understand y'all are going to do some major upgrades probably over the next couple of years. Anything purchased or add new cameras or any other sort of safety or security device we can integrate with? There's no cost to that. It's simply just adding more cameras and simply adding a, an address for the camera, for lack of a better term. So they won't, they won't require you to make another capital adjustment down the road just because you're adding more cameras and more security measures to the campuses.
Just real quick, I won't take a lot of time. I'm pretty excited about this. Just for the fact that when he asked me if we could talk to people, right as I can. But more than, but more than that is, so often, we have a major event happen here, and we get inundated with nine-one-one calls in dispatch. And that dispatcher's dispatching, she's, he or she's answering the nine-one-one call. She's trying to send officers, if it's fire, E M S, she's trying to page those people out. There's one person sitting in that chair. What this is gonna allow, as soon as this button is pushed up here, that, most people aren't gonna see this right here. You may see some video of something that's pushed out to you, but what you're seeing on the screen primarily, and Kylie correct me if I'm wrong, this is what's gonna pop up in dispatch. And they're, they're gonna have a screen that's dedicated to this, and it's gonna pop up in the middle of the screen, and it's gonna show where that panic button was pushed, and it's immediately gonna show on the closest campus to it. And so within seconds, so before anybody even says anything on a nine-one-one call, they're seeing what's happening. That's worth millions to me. Because it's not somebody that's on the other end of the phone, is panicking, trying to explain to, to my dispatcher, to where they can understand what's going on, to where they can take maybe what they're getting hearing on the, on their nine-one-one calls, and putting it together with what they're seeing on the, on the screen, and be able to give the officers, the paramedics, the fire, whoever's coming here, firsthand information, and they're sitting in the dispatch center. And the reason it's firsthand is because they're sitting there looking at it. I don't know if any of y'all saw, White House is doing a pilot program there, and they did a little special on the news to where they were gonna, a nine-one-one call of an odor in the school. So, but it's like a gas leak in the school, and they did the drill. Of course, soon as they pushed the button, it pulled, popped up where the button was pushed, and they pulled up camera, and they see three kids laying in the hall. And they see they were moving around, and so they, it was a drill. But they were able to give immediate information to where we never would be able to do that without this. It's just another deal, and I was talking to the chief deputy over there, and they, they had a situation to where they have chat groups, I guess you'd call them.
Talk groups, yeah.
Talk groups set up to where if somebody pushes the panic button here, that it immediately, not only does dispatch get told, but I do, Dr. McCullough can get it, y'all can get it. You can have a core group that gets these alerts immediately on your phone, just as fast as dispatch gets the nine-one-one call. They can pull it up and make, their alarm system had gone off for a fire, fire drill that nobody knew about. And so the chief deputy gets it on his phone, he's immediately able to look on there, and he calls the principal and says, hey, I'm getting an alarm on my phone. And he goes, yeah, I just got it too. But he said, I'm sitting here looking at the cameras, the kids are sitting in the room, so what's going on? He said, it's a false alarm. To go ahead and send everybody, but tell them to slow down and just to come on out and check the things out, versus running code all the way through town to get over there to check this. They're able to drive over there at reasonable speed, go in, check everything out, verify it's a false alarm, and go back home without a lot, a lot less disruption in the, in the community and in the, in the school. And so, you know, it's, it's, it gives us immediate eyes inside the building. And, and, and it notifies whoever, Dr. McCullough and y'all choose. And it notifies whoever, Dr. McCullough and y'all choose, the principal, who you want to put in these groups.
Think about Friday night lights too. This is one of the most common uses here in Texas especially. Put five or six guys in a talk group for Friday night security. And they don't carry around radios anymore, which is a huge issue after you have it here. If you get inside a building like this, and we're talking a lot of concrete, a lot of waste and deflect and refract that radio signal. So if they go into, let's say, into the locker room to follow up on a kid that was injured out on the field, those radio signals don't always get in and out, in and out of the building. But as soon as they come inside the building, they switch over to wifi, they go back outside the building, they're on LTE. So you don't have that loss of coverage because of trees, terrain, you know, building walls, things like that. And like Sheriff said, these talk groups can be, I think this would be a very useful tool here under all this construction that's going to be happening. Have certain people that are just on that talk group, you know, that need to know about, hey, there's a delivery coming or a where is somebody back at the loading dock? I don't know, do you text everybody now? How do you get communication? Because you've got plenty of footprint here.
Cell phone text, yeah.
And that's the other thing I liked about this too, instead of, we have a major event up there and here I am, I start calling the sheriff's office and the dispatcher along with all the other calls, what's going on in the school? You know, to her now, and they're trying to call and notify Dr. McCullough and the principals of something going on, to where this will send the alerts directly to their phones. They don't have to waste their time calling individual people, saying, hey, we got this going on, we got this going on to four or five people. It will instantaneously go to their phones. They can start addressing issues that they're having there in front of them and not having to worry about calling everybody. Did you get them notified? Did you get them called? No, because you always forget somebody.
And where are the dispatches?
They're not paying me anything. I just, and we've been, we've been meeting with them for over a year now, different groups of sheriffs. Actually, all the sheriffs in East Texas, we met with them over at Kilgore. Not at the real place, but at the tavern that we met in another bar. But anyway, but we've been meeting with them for a while. The more I look at it, the more we all sit and talk about it since, in business with the Smith County. Smith County is actually, they're going to go ahead and upfront pay for the licensing for every one of their deputies. Because the other night they had a manhunt and they've had a couple of the deputies that had it. They, and you can have as many talk groups are going and events going on at one time. Your bus drivers could be on an event by themselves every day to where they can communicate to each other and know where each other is at. But, but where did I go with that? But, oh. Got any questions? Oh, yeah, they were going on a manhunt and they, some of them were there, so they activated the program and they could see where they were at. And they're saying, you know, why don't we have this on every deputy's phone or on their computer car and their computer, in their computer, so I can see where they're actually located. Because we have a manhunt, we're looking at a map and we say, okay, you go down this, down this road to that curve and you go to this curve over here, thinking we've got a good perimeter set up. But then you actually get to an area of you, or you're looking at a map and you're thinking, I've got gaps all in this thing. So you can actually find where people are at and put them in specific locations. And the same thing here, I can see where every, if every teacher had this on their phone, we have a shooting incident here. Every camera on those phones becomes a camera that we can see if they activate it. It has to be activated by them. Nothing can be activated from the software.
Yeah, that's a conversation I don't have outside of closed doors like this because school boards and persons of interest in the community always ask the same question. Can anybody access our cameras? I don't want some dispatcher sitting in the dispatch console checking to see if your kids are fifth period Spanish. First of all, there's not a dispatcher on the planet that has time to do that. But secondly, as quickly as those cameras were turned on, sheriff shows up, gives the all-clear, Dr. McCullough confirms, yep, it was a false alarm, we don't need to call in the cavalry. I hit the okay button on my panic button, with your seat, SynthJigs button. Cameras disappear, they can't be accessed again until somebody creates another incident, yeah, panic button. And this could be tied into the fire alarm system. Any sort of sensor?
And so it's just, it works great.
From a privacy standpoint, we're FCPA and HIPAA compliant. Somebody might know what those mean and others might not. You guys all talk in acronyms, I don't know how you keep things so straight. Anything else sheriff that I forgot?
You said it shows like the location, does it tell you exactly who set it off? So like who pushes it?
Our SynthJigs button will.
Yeah.
Those don't lie because it'll be, like, my button will be mine, so wherever I am.
So does it identify as Dr. McCullough's?
Yes, it does. I thought it didn't, yeah.
This is, this is, y'all's hardware would be installed up here, the software would be installed here and at the sheriff's office. And, what were your questions, ma'am?
If it identifies two kids, the...
Yes, and also has to do with location. Oh, it'll show us where, right now, we don't have digital mapping of your school.
We're actually working on that with
Working with that, with the Architex Council.
Architex Council Government, yeah.
And hopefully they're going to get that paid for for every school district in their, in the Architex COG, which is going to be huge because it's, that would make the
Overlay with that.
Overlay with this that we could get. And so that would show, again, goes back to if every teacher had this on their phone, we'd know exactly where they were at on the campus. Where'd they go hide at, or where'd they hunker down at, or did they make it out of the building and where they were? Are they over at the new baseball fields or at, are they over at the football field?
But that's only when the panic
That's only when the panic, but it has to be during the event and in a situation. Nothing, we cannot access anything without the person's permission. Even their cameras, even if they had the software on their phone, or the app on their phone, we can't access it unless they hit okay. It has to be asked and okay. And then as soon as it's over with, as soon as they can, they're not turn that off to themselves too, we can't stay on their phone. So if they get through and they think we're done, I need to go to the restroom, they're safe to go to the restroom. I know what you mean, same thing. Because we're, our officers get new body cameras to where my dispatch can access them now because we have LTE cameras on their body cam. And so they have to actually be on and activated by them before the dispatch, before they're sent through there.
And are you getting the new Axon cameras?
No, this is Motorola.
Okay. It shouldn't be a difference of Axon, be integrated with the live feed Axon cameras. So that, you know, if I get out of my cruiser, I got my body cam on, I'm worried I'm taking this with me because I can start sharing my live video through our app again to everybody else, so wait and see.
Any questions?
Typically, how many staff on campus actually have it on their phone? Administrators, all teachers?
You know, it varies. And I'll tell you what it comes down to, money first of all. The license to have the application on your phone, full version, like you see everything that's going on here.
I was wondering about that panic button.
I'm sorry.
The panic button will be in the SynthJigs piece.
Yeah, how's that part of the camera part?
No.
No, the camera, no.
See what I'm saying? How many people are going to have it on their phone, in the panic button?
That's going to be Heather, administrators, probably Bobby. I mean, that's mostly for the
Yeah, it's not everyone.
No, the teacher won't have that on their phone, no.
But it could be whoever you want to play for. And what's it going to call?
Hundred dollars a year for a license.
Per phone.
Per user. Now, I can have the login for my phone and access it on my computer too. So if Dr. McCullough's in his office and he left his phone in the bathroom and the alarm goes off somewhere, he can pull it up on his computer. Or if he's got his phone with him, he can switch right over to the app on the phone and see if he can control everything, just like he would from a computer.
If you look, if you've got to take your board book, the total cost of the project itself on the quote is ninety-eight thousand, two sixty-four. As Kylie said, they're offering us a pilot program, Kylie, if I speak up, Kylie correct me, okay? Which would be for a year-long pilot project. As he said, they've got grant writers on board that they're willing to work with us as a district to write the grants to to try to engage in the safety money that's been put out by the state. If we are able to get the grant, then the grant would cover the cost of the project. If it's not, the conversation we had after a year, then
We'd schedule a payment plan if that works into the budget better. Also, I have some good news. Are you TIPS members? Okay, then you can knock ten percent off of that price. We're just now getting TIPS certified. Are you text buy too?
Are we text buy, Craig? I know we're Bible word, I don't know if we're text buy, I know we're Bible word. Region seven and tips with region eight.
It's for three years.
It's three years. Now, is the, one question, project costs at ninety-eight, that doesn't cover the hundred dollars per license?
I believe she put a bunch of licenses in there.
For the ninety-eight she did?
I think so, yeah.
But it's likely we'll get this grant, right?
That's what I was going to ask. What's the likelihood? I know you can't guarantee, but the grant success that you see?
I think we've applied for a dozen, maybe fourteen grants for this from last year's money that came out from the initial, what, one or two million or whatever, at least last October. Every single one of them got paid for. Our grant writers really good at finding money in strange places too. I don't know if y'all know where Fosse City is, but it's down in Karnes County. Our grant writer found the lower Colorado River Authority, put a small blurb somewhere online. Hey, we got a hundred, we want to dole this out to people who are going to do a community impact project. So then it was a short window, a thirty-day window. And she applied for the grant, they got fifty thousand dollars, just like that. Cover all the licensing and installation, even connecting them up with the sheriff's office to give the sheriffs a handful of licenses as well. Okay, so she's got, let's see, thirty, four, five. It looks like she put four licenses per school.
So what is the remote view licensing sat here, says two hundred of those?
That's to cover your, we estimate that you have a maximum of two hundred cameras.
Okay, all right, so you're saying that link setup fee, is that the, which one is the one you're staying with the remote license? Let's see.
Well, the ones that come, the ones that
Push-to-talk?
Yeah, the push-to-talk.
Three.
Two hundred and eighty. Oh, wow. Two seventy.
Two seventy-three, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, that's per campus.
So, is there anything for the ministers?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
What's this, right here?
Elementary, middle school. They're asking about the high school, I'm sorry, the admin office. Man, looks like two, two for admin. No, that two is for Franklin County, sorry.
Two seventy-two, two seventy.
And if you, like Sheriff was talking about down in Smith County, if you determine one day you need four more licenses, we can issue you a little bit in ten minutes. Our system will automatically send a login and password instructions and you can download, everybody can download the app for free either on the Apple Store or Google Play Store. You just need login credentials to make it work. So what we do a lot, and I encourage this, if you're going to have licenses for, let's say, your Friday night security team and maybe that team rotates, it might not be the same four or five guys that are working every Friday. They can just share login credentials. They won't be able to both log in at the same time with the same credentials. But if you're swapping out for my spot on Friday night, you just take my login credentials and save some money that way. It's very common too with our bus drivers, because I don't know if y'all have the same issue, all these ISDs that I've talked to. They have bus driver turnover and some bus drivers fill in for others so they can all share the same credentials and not have to worry about purchasing additional licenses.
I have one more question. If we do the, if they agreed to do the pilot program, the first year's free, when does that first year start?
Uh, that would be
After install and everybody else? If they agree, you might, it can start tonight and you still have to do the install, so it can get too much.
That would be if you don't, because we're done installing.
It shows the time in April fourth. On the, to show completion day, April fourth, that is sure it's estimated, but So that's a start to one-year timeframe?
Yeah.
And ideally, they give them a grant and get the funds, but the worst case scenario, worst case scenario, we didn't like it and a year has passed and we don't think it all out. Which is just four or five computers that have been hooked up next to y'all's computer.
I know it's not kosher, but can I ask a question?
Go.
Say a teacher wants to get their own, can they pay them for themselves to get the app? Or the community says, we want to donate so many thousand dollars for however, whatever. Could that be done as well? So that it could be, and some teachers could have it on their phone in case a student gets by and has a weapon and it's in a classroom. You know, would that be something that was doable?
I mean, we talked about it, and once we got it rolling, I would think we'd kind of get some. And then we would talk to probably other schools and see what they're doing, if it's working and because you might want to, like what I'm thinking in my mind, you might want a teacher that's on the end of a pod at the elementary school or on that end of the high school, so, but I want to, that's a good question. I think we'd want to
I was just going to say, I feel like that would be something, our safety, because you also don't want to broadcast too much. So that would be something that we, I would want to rely heavily on the offices.
And don't get this confused with her alerts, this is not what alerts us, this just gives us the ability to gain more information from you. The more people have it, the more information they get.
Really, the mutual link part is more for the responders and administrators from the campus as a communication tool. Because every teacher will have the SynthJigs button, panic button, it'll have. So, so we talked about in regard to campus safety teams as a possibility for sure.
Because that panic button, the pictures, y'all get alerted with it?
They will. They're going to alert it with that regardless of we do mutual link or not.
This picks up, well, that leaves off. They push that and it sends us a 911 alert. Well, that, well, this app picks up as well. That button's pushed, this gives us the ad system to within seconds see why they pushed that button, even if they can't talk to us.
Right, so even if they don't have the app, they're going, y'all are going to have
We're going to have it in our dispatch.
So with the interactive maps will be there, but the SynthJigs part, when all that gets overlaid, Ricky and his group will have, so it'll actually show, I think I've shared before, say Ms. Stinson is in her classroom and pushes, it's going to show her in her classroom. But if she's out with students from the playground and she pushes, it's going to show her on the interactive map out of the playground. But what the difference is going to be where this comes in, is once she pushes it, now the 911 dispatch, Ricky and whoever else has it, now will give camera feed into what actually is taking place, real time. As well as a communication tool for all people who are
So if teachers need it on their phones, if you have this to push, if they're pushing it, they have, they push the button, what would be the advantage of?
I don't think every teacher needs it though.
Is there something else to talk about, because I'm not, I, I think, like I'm already, I hate that we just had to publicly say where we have a door we missed. So, some of this, you know, I don't know. I'd love a chance, I don't know, if we could talk to you, just where cameras locate, I don't know. Does that, am I making sense? No, I have a question, where I don't want to, like, broadcast, like, safety, I don't want to expose
The other day, we were at the Capitol talking to a bunch of Senator Griffon's committee deal, they started bringing up stuff and one of our sheriffs had to say, I don't think we need to be talking about this in here. You know, there's some things you don't want to talk about in public, but I'd be happy to talk to you privately. Private, for safety and security is another reason you go to executive session and talk to, if you don't talk in public.
You've got one of the best resources on the yield, that EST center. I know he and Sheriff work really well together. He would be more than happy to come out and advise on camera locations and things like that. He would be more than happy to come out and advise on camera locations and things like that.
And we, and we choose who sees this, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
And the school system is more and more, it's not for every employee on the campus, it's more for your administrators, your, your responders, your EMS. And, and for, for law enforcement, it's, the, a lot of people, I don't know, when we're working on getting here, if you dial nine-one-one, we can get. We have now the ability to get live feed for your phone now without, without the, it's just one, one-way communication. But, uh, but, uh, this is more for the first responders to be able to get here, to see what's going on, get accurate information, which saves. Hold up, gold, time is golden here in those situations, so if it can save you two to three minutes of trying to figure out what's going on, then that's a lot of time.
Sheriff Cass had an incident shared with us about a month and a half ago. There was a nine-one-one caller came in and said, a student just got hit by a car. They're laying in the middle of the road. So of course, they enroll everybody they possibly can get there to find, you know, find out where this student is. Well, they're out in front of the building, he was on the road behind the building that was next to the football field. And two cameras were on that scene right there, but they didn't have access to those cameras. And so they spent thirty minutes trying to find this kid. They don't have enough light lighting, but Sheriff Cass said this would have been a game changer. You know, we, we could have looked outside immediately and seen this kid laying in the middle of the street. So in situations like that where, our motto is saving minutes when seconds count. Fortunately, that kid's going to pull through, pull through, but he laid there for extraordinary amount of time before he was even found.
Okay, so we got ninety-eight thousand dollars, ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars, we get ten percent off because of tips. But we have a pilot program that's going to cover a year.
For you.
If we commit to this, we get the pilot program for a year and then.
We'll assist you with, with seeking the grant money.
Okay. We don't get a grant, pilot's over in a year, and once we get everything installed, then we're responsible for this ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-four minus the ten percent.
Yeah.
And whatever is the other discounts we can get. Okay, so this thing's going to cost us around ninety thousand if we don't get the grants. Pretty cheap for safety, so, you know, we're spending a bunch of money on fans around, yeah. Yeah. I think. So.
I'll take a postdated check, is that what it's supposed to be? Take a postdated check.
Yeah.
Signed, signed twenty twenty-four, you know.
Just give us that grant and then we'll be okay.
I don't know if y'all heard me, she was asking, what, what's your question, you asked me about how many grants have you gotten? Y'all were busy.
Is all of them, right?
Yeah, we, we have been unsuccessful in getting a grant.
That's safety money, there may not be as much safety money this year as there was last year, maybe, but.
I think it will be the same with more of the T E A.
Okay, that's good news for us.
It's going to be valuable.
Sounds like a pretty good investment though. When you have cameras, what better way to utilize them than this right here?
Well, that's, you know, that's one of the things that I really love about our product is we don't require you to buy new cameras or any safety. We leverage the value that you've already put into, uh, the investment money you've already put into your safety and security measures.
Do we have the technology, something you said earlier, if you have the technology, do we have the technology here? Do we have what it takes to run this system here and in this area?
Yeah, and when you get that sentience panic button, that'd be another game changer. That's like, it's really, really a good panic alert system.
So. I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed pilot program with mutual link. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Linda. Any further questions? All four? Seven oh.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate it.
I'm sonic right now.
I'm standing, consider approval of the resolution regarding school chaplain.
Okay, we have a resolution here for you, uh, as, as we've talked about. House Bill's, uh, seven sixty-three from the A H legislature requires that the board of trustees take a record vote. Whether to adopt a policy authorizing, uh, Mount Vernon to employ a chaplain or a volunteer. Uh, after talking, um, to our legal counsel and some other districts. Uh, because there aren't, uh, any requirements or any certain things put in place by T E A or by the legislature for this. In regards to what qualifications chaplain has to have to be able to serve. Uh, it'd be my recommendation, um, that we, um, do not employ or use as, um, as a volunteer as a chaplain. Uh, I believe that our counselors that we have in the district and that we do have access to if emergency takes place, uh, available to us. Would serve the purpose of our district as we have right now.
Okay. Can you explain, because this is a little different, like, can you go, because this is new. We don't really know what's going on, isn't it interesting that there, you have to take some sort of action? Instead of allowing it, could you ever reverse it?
Sure you could, the board can go back and review it, yes. If, if legislature or T E A comes out with some different, um, with more information in regard to, be more specific in regard to what, um, what, what qualifications chaplain would have to hold. Then we could come back and make a change if you'd like to.
If we did pass it, I mean, we don't have to hire nobody, we're in charge of, if we did want to bring someone in. We've got the right to, to like interview them just like you would a teacher.
Okay.
I read them today and that's what I was sort of, I'm not sure if that would enforce.
Yeah.
We have the right to interview them just like they would.
It's basically ready pay position, of course, yes.
Or even volunteering or whatever, dog too, so.
Yeah, the district can set up their own sort of qualifications if we need to, yeah.
There's been a time or two in years past where we've had this, you know, incident where we needed people, you know, with student cut in life or have a tragedy and you're, um. What do we call our, uh?
Our school communities.
Yeah. So, so what, so what, so what this doesn't, what this doesn't restrict us from doing, if we have an emergency as regard to what Aaron's talking about is, I know that the district has experienced in the past. It does not keep us from having local pastors or youth ministers coming in to, if we need them as well. Just, just basically, our counselors, as well as region eight, anytime the emergency happens, region eight has staff, other schools bringing, or allow their counselors to come and serve our students as well. And that, and that's the benefit of living in rural communities we do, uh, to have, to have that support and that help. Uh, but those school counselors are trained to work with students, uh, in situations such as that, and, um, that's what we have pledged to.
There's some red flags, kind of a, the new.
Same as the board, what you see is correct.
That, you know, I feel like there's not a lot of information very interesting.
You approve that everything going on where it is?
Yeah. Right. Okay. Are any further questions about this resolution? Yeah, kind of see what it looks like on the board book there, so, uh. At this time, uh, if we want to do this, I need to have a motion that we approve this resolution regarding the school chaplain. We'll approve the resolutions on the board book right here. Which would mean we're not going with anything. Just keep rolling like we are.
We agree, I agree.
If I'm reading it right.
Correct. Basically, it's on number two, on that says, board trustee does not authorize Mount Vernon Independent School District to employ or accept as a volunteer. A chaplain on a campus or campuses of Mount Vernon Independent School District.
We don't get them, well, we got to have a motion.
Yeah.
And a second for this thing to pass, so I want to make a motion that we, uh, that we approve this resolution regarding the school chaplain. Is there a second to keep it going? Second by Josh. Any further questions on it? I need the four and against, so all four. That's one, two, three, seven oh, zero against, no abstains, and none are absent. Seven oh on that resolution. This time the board, uh, convenes in a closed session at seven sixteen, uh, five five one oh seven four. Back into open session, any further business?
I have one personnel recommendation, that would be Blake McClure, uh, to replace one of our vacant police officer positions.
Okay. Do we need action on that, please? Need a motion to accept Blake McClure as, McClure as a police officer?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Kyle. Second by Robert, any further questions? All four, Blake, seven. Any further business?
No, sir.
Meeting's over at eight thirty-seven.
Eight thirty-seven.
Thank you all very much.